Good evening. Let me go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruya Independent School District to order. It is now, it is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. It's currently 6:31 PM and we are at the RGC GISD Family and Community Engagement Center located at One South Fort Ringo, Rio Grande City, Texas. Section one, we're going to take a roll call for purposes of determination of a quorum. Daria Dr. B. Babino, not present. Mr. Lesario Velazquez Jr.
Present.
Mr. Johnny Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Basilio D. Vareal Jr.
Present.
Mr. Jay Peña.
I'm present.
And myself, Eric Ramirez, present. Let the members reflect that we do have a quorum to proceed with the meeting. Before we proceed to section two, I do think it would behoove us to take a moment of silence. We did lose a pillar of the community, Father to Dafino Garza, who has helped out the school district tremendously, and I believe he passed on the sixth. So you all will join us in a moment of silence on behalf of Dafino Garza Senior. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Velazquez will help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has had, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Section three, approval of minutes. That would include the public hearing of October 12th, 2021, as well as the regular board meeting held on October 12th, 2021 as well.
Mr. President, I move that we approve public hearing October 12th of the year 2021 and regular board meeting of October 12th of the year 2021.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that motion?
A second on motion.
A second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. I have been handed three different public forum requests. Due to time constraints, I will allow each individual to speak for three minutes. Mr. Salazar, will you please make sure and account for the allotment of minutes? The first one that was handed to me is an individual by name of Art Flores, who wants to address the school board about, I can't make out the first part, it's ineligible, but I can read vaccine deaths and events. So is there Mr. Art Flores? If you can come by the podium, sir. We haven't started. Would you want to make sure you can be heard loud and clear, sir?
Okay, testing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Art Flores. Good evening. I'd like to just ask a favor, just for a quick second. Pretend that you're in a restaurant and you're sitting next to anybody in your family. You can take off your mask, you're safe. Just pretend you're in a restaurant. I came to speak to you about VAERS. You spell it V-A-E-R-S. The V stands for vaccine. A is adverse, which means bad. Events Reporting System. Bad things happen to people when they get the vaccine. It's reported by individuals and doctors. It's voluntary, so not all of the events are reported. There have been over 800,000 bad events that have been reported. Some of the bad events have been deaths. Deaths are not 15,000 here, because this is about a month or two old. It's 18,000 deaths have been reported. Hospitalizations, 88,000. Urgent care, 95,900. Doctor office visits, 133,900. Anaphylaxis, 7,800. Bell's palsy, 10,700. Miscarriages, 2,700. Heart attacks, 8,800. 11,400 myocarditis, pericarditis. Permanently disabled, 28,000. And it goes on and on. Life-threatening, 20,000. Severe allergic reactions, 32,000. This agency that, this group that reports these, that has these deaths, it's on the website and it's a government agency. It's cosponsored by the CDC, the FDA, and HHS, Health and Human Services. When you look at the website, which is very easy to find, you're going to find a menu at the top that says, "Look for the red boxes." These are the red boxes. And that's where the numbers come from. The place to look for it, the place to look for it is openvaers.com. Open VAERS, one word, dot com. One of the people that is reported in that reporting system is a fellow citizen of mine, lives in my town. His name's Ernesto Ramirez Jr.
25 seconds.
Ernesto Ramirez Senior was a single parent. His son took the vaccine in April of this year, 2021, and five days after he took the vaccine, he died. I just want you to pay a little respect to him, but that's only one that has been reported. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. The second request that I have is for Juanita Amiel Townsend. She wants to speak to the board with regards to masks and vaccine recommendations. At the same time, Ms. Townsend, you have three minutes, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Juanita Amiel Townsend, and I am here on behalf of the Texas Light Guardians, as well as the community which you serve. As a school board elected official, you are tonight receiving a copy of the Omega Brief. The Omega Brief has been delivered to every state senate and house elected official, as well as the lieutenant governor, the governor, and the attorney general, everyone who has an office in Austin. This document contains irrefutable evidence of COVID-19 pandemic criminal conspiracy and racketeering, as identified in patent findings by David Martin, PhD. Dr. Martin's company has been reviewing patents worldwide in 168 countries for over 20 years. Registered US patents demonstrate that COVID is not a naturally occurring virus. It is a bioweapon being used to scare our community into complying with vaccine and mask mandates. Criminal charges are being filed for the flawed PCR testing that is responsible for the gross overstatement of positive COVID cases. We anticipate that you will give the Omega Brief your attention. Further, we demand that any mask and vaccine mandates or recommendations end immediately. According to VAERS, as of today, there have been over 18,600 deaths related to the COVID-19 vaccine. One of those deaths, like Art just mentioned, is 16-year-old Ernesto Ramirez Jr. from Edinburgh, whose picture is on my shirt today. How many more people have to die before the tyranny ends? We know the truth, and now so will you. The time for ignorance is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. The third individual is Reina E. Rodriguez from Eyes Wide Open, and she too would like to address the board regarding masks and vaccinations.
My name's Reina Rodriguez, and I'm here to let you know that my husband took the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and he passed away. I live in Edinburgh. I have children in the school district of Edinburgh that are constantly being forced to wear a mask. I myself am a medical professional. I have nieces and nephews in this county, and everybody is being told to put a mask on your child when we have enough evidence that says that there is no such thing as a pandemic. The only reason you guys want to keep the pandemic happening is for the pandemic funding that is given, that has been approved all the way to 2024. So if we don't have a pandemic, the schools have to give back money that doesn't belong to you guys. We love our children, and that's why we're here today. I am suing Edinburgh School Board because of this, and I will have brought the fight to Cameron County, Willacy County, San Patricio County, Nueces County, and I'm bringing it to start now, because I care about my children, and my nieces and nephews, and everybody else's children in this district. There is no pandemic. I have pictures of some of the board members right now that I took coming here this morning, or right now. No masks. Sitting, chit-chatting, talking to one another. No masks. All of a sudden, the cameras come on and, "Let's start the charade. Let's put on these masks that don't work, that are going to hold bacteria, that are going to give you bacterial pneumonia as a long-term use of them. Open your history books, research the Spanish flu, and find out what killed most people. Masks and injections that were given to the people." But now you know. Now is your turn to take care of our kids and do your job. It's your kids suffering, guys. Mr. Ernesto Ramirez actually messaged me that he's on his way. He wanted to speak to you guys, but I guess he didn't get here on time because the address is very confusing on how to get to your location. But he will be outside if anybody wants to ask him questions, because he's been to Austin and Washington DC. The media censors us. Nobody wants to report on the fight we are doing, and the only reason we're doing it is because of the children, and their future, and our future as we know it.
25 seconds.
Please do your job. Don't play with the kids. It's not fair. They're innocent. Thank you.
Section five, Announcement of Board Members Training Required by TASB. Policy BBD Legal: Board Members Training and Orientation.
Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña. On section five, you have the mandatory reporting for board member continuing education. As you see, Mr. President, on your handout, the board has exceeded the required trainings. Does anyone have questions?
Any questions? Any question? All right. Thank you, Dr. Townsend.
Thank you, sir.
Section six, Reports and Information. Item one, Presentation by Starr County Youth Fair. I have an oral presentation listed here. Is anybody here from the Starr County Youth Fair? That being the case, let's go ahead and proceed to item two, Recognitions. TAVE 2021 Summit K-12 District School and Educator of the Year Awards. Mr. Jesús Martínez.
Good evening, Mr. Eric Ramirez, board president, members of the board, Mr. Adolfo Peña, superintendent of schools, and audience present and virtually. From emerging bilinguals and students struggling to read or write, to those who need a little extra practice to master science, reading, language arts, or listening, speaking, concepts, and gain confidence ahead of status assessments, Summit K-12 Online Standards-Based Supplemental Curriculum will close gaps and ensure growth for all students. The highly engaging, interactive content encourages students to practice and build their skills, whether they're learning at home or in person. At Summit K-12, they believe that every student can do well in school if instruction is tailored to their unique learning needs, and they receive the encouragement to strive and achieve. Our learning programs provide teachers with the ability to differentiate instruction, monitor progress, and support learners in their journey towards success. The Summit K-12 Award highlights school districts, campuses, and bilingual ESL teachers that demonstrated the greatest gains on their 2021 Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System, TELPA's composite scores. Finalists were selected from top-performing statewide Summit K-12 partners, including 300 districts and over 25,000 educators. At Summit K-12, our mission is to ensure equity for all students by providing differentiated, accelerated, and personalized learning pathways. These awards provide a unique opportunity to recognize and acknowledge the hard work and leadership provided by teachers and administrators in so many of our district partners, said John Kreske, founder and CEO of the Summit K-12. We want to celebrate the schools and educators who are leading the way when it comes to accelerating language acquisition for their emerging bilingual students. Recipients of the 2020-2021 statewide school district, campus, and educator of the year for English language development and TELPA's readiness awareness were announced at the Texas Association for Bilingual Education, TAVE, in El Paso, Texas during a Summit K-12 special ceremony on October 25th, 2021. It is truly an honor to be recognized by Summit K-12 at TAVE, especially for language and academic gains during a school year like no other due to COVID-19 and virtual instruction. These awards affirm the commitment the bilingual ESL department has made to support emerging bilinguals across our district, and the gains our students and campuses have made is a testament to the investment from educators, administrators, and our partners like Summit K-12. It gives me great pleasure to present to you and congratulate the following campuses, educators, and our very own district. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your award. Rio Grande City High School Principal, Mr. Jorge I. Peña, recognized as the top high school of the year, first place for closing the gap with emerging bilinguals.
Congratulations, Mr. Peña.
Veterans Middle School Principal, Mr. Jesse Rodriguez, recognized as one of the top three middle schools of the year, third place for closing the gap with emerging bilinguals. And we also want to give a special thank you to Mr. Enrique Cantú, former BMS principal. Gruya Middle School Principal, Mr. Rene Peña, recognized as one of the top 10 middle schools of the year, sixth place for closing the gap with emerging bilinguals. General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary School Principal, Mrs. Brenda Carmona, recognized as one of the top 10 elementary schools of the year, sixth place for closing the gaps with emerging bilinguals. We have Ms. Isabel López here representing the school, and a special thank you to Mrs. Teresa Ariasola, former General Sanchez Elementary Principal. We also have, from Rio Grande City High School, E.L.R. teacher, Mrs. Zulma Sandoval, and recently retired E.L.R. teacher, Mrs. Arminda Mindegarza, who were recognized as the top three high school ESL teachers of the year, second place out of 25,000 educators for closing the gap with emerging bilinguals. So congratulations to these wonderful teachers. Mrs. Arminda Mindegarza was also presented with the Summit K-12 First Ever Lifetime Achievement Award, given to a retired teacher for her services to bilingual ESL students, and excellence to education. Her award is on the mail as we speak. I want to give a special thank you to the bilingual ESL strategists and each campus L-PAC committee for their commitment and dedication to improve the academic and linguistic skills of our bilingual ESL students, and providing endless hours of staff development for our bilingual ESL educators. And we cannot close this without announcing to you that Rio Grande City Gruya ISD Superintendent, Mr. Adolfo Peña, and myself, bilingual director, recognized as the top district of the year, first place out of 300 districts in the mid-sized category for closing the gap with emerging bilinguals.
Thank you. We can have the board. Okay. Item three, Update on Students' Staff Highlights. Mr. Adriano Suna.
It's a video presentation.
Where did he go?
Turn it on if it's ready.
Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent, members of the community here. As we did last month, we presented our achievements, our accomplishments for the month of September. Now here is our October edition. It's very, very hard after so many things that we did, so many wonderful things that our staff and our students did, to summarize it into one video, but we did our best. Hopefully you enjoy some of the highlights that we had for the month of October.
Rio Grande City Gruya ISD aims for excellence in every aspect of school life. Every campus and department is committed to every student having an opportunity for greatness. From keeping our schools safe and clean, to ensuring that our students are healthy and well fed, after-school enrichment and tutorial programs, RGC GISD is committed to making a well-rounded student. Rio Grande City Gruya ISD aims for excellence in every aspect of school life. Every campus and department is committed to every student having an opportunity for greatness. From keeping our schools safe and clean, to ensuring that our students are healthy and well-fed, as well as providing after-school enrichment and tutorial programs, RGC GISD is committed to making a well-rounded student who is physically, emotionally, and academically balanced. October was a sensational month at Rio Grande City Gruya ISD. The city of Rio Grande City held a trunk-or-treat at Basilio Vareal Municipal Park. Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., along with the Public Relations Department, represented RGC GISD by passing out goodie bags and a lot of candy. The Kirkland Instruction Department dressed up and treated RGC GISD students to a Halloween surprise, and the first-ever superintendent's math challenge was executed effortlessly. With over 4,000 students participating, we hope to prepare our students for their upcoming star exams. RGC GISD participated in the Region 1 ESC Grant Announcement, where the district was awarded two seven-year grants, as well as our continued participation in the Gear Up Grant. Rio Grande City Gruya ISD was also awarded District of the Year at the Summit K-12 Conference. Rio Grande City High School, Gruya Middle School, Veterans Middle School, and General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary were also recognized as the top schools in the state, as well as two of our ESL teachers, Zulma Sandoval and Arminda Garza. RGC GISD celebrated our sensational principals for National Principals Month. Each principal received a cake and a card as a token of appreciation. Our Gator and Rattler Athletics Teams, cross-country volleyball and football, had excellent seasons, with both the Gator Football Team and Gator Volleyball Team making it to the playoffs. We are also proud to announce that the Mighty Rattler Band and Mighty Gator Band advanced to UIL State Championships in San Antonio, Texas. Our RGC GISD students and staff have gone above and beyond this past month, and we are so proud. At Rio Grande City Gruya ISD, we strive to give you, our students and our staff, an
I think before we proceed, we got to mention the bands, for sure. Got the Royal High School Band, who advanced to Area, placed third out of 35 teams, and represented us incredibly well at state. Same goes to the Gruya High School Band, second place out of 38, and they perform tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. So I wish them all the best of luck tomorrow. Football Team's Royal High had a great season, and then Gruya is in playoffs. They play Friday night at Port Lavaca at 7:30. So again, our well wishes to them, and congratulations so far for all they've done this season.
Item four, Update Report from RGC GISD Health Services Department. Mr. Rolando Barrera.
Good evening, board president, gentlemen of the board, staff and community members, Superintendent Peña. I want to give you a little update on our Health Services Department in our district at the moment. We have 81 total cases as per the Department of Health in All of Starr County. Eighty-one. We've come a long way. You know, we've had cases up to 1,200-plus, and that's when a time where 1,200-plus people had COVID and no vaccines were around, so it was spreading like crazy. You know, we've come a long way, and at the moment, we are, numbers are very, very low. Okay? At the moment, at our school district, we offer a lot of services to try to help out our families as much as possible. So we have, for example, the telehealth services that we started this year, and we've done over 150-plus visits, all of them. Parents are happy with the services that we're providing, okay? And we are, you know, we offer those services so parents can continue to stay working. Kids, if they're able to stay in school, they can stay in school and continue to be learning. We will continue to offer these services to help out our staff, our community, our students, and our parents, everybody. In the past, once again, our cases have gone down lower. Many people in our community believe it's because our vaccine efforts previously and right now. I believe it's one of the main reasons, and we continue to follow the CDC guidance and FDA guidance and National Institute of Health... FDA guidance and National Institute of Health guidance, and all of them say that they do recommend vaccines as soon as you're eligible to do it. We do not mandate vaccines in our district. You know, our organization, RGCG ISD, does not require you to get the vaccine. You know, you choose to get it. We've had multiple, multiple clinics in the past and even right now. Every single person that goes, they go out of their own will. Each one of them, of course, did their own research, they talked to their doctors, and their doctor said, "I recommend you get it." And we were happy to provide, you know, the resources that in our district for people to get it when they choose to get it, okay? We've had five booster clinics, you know, and each one continues to be a little bit more, okay? More people are getting it. Children, children up to five and older have had the opportunity to get it. Once again, these are parents that choose to get it. We in no way make anybody get the vaccine, so we believe that the vaccines are safe and effective, and we are glad that we work in, we live in a government that does have the opportunity for this, you know? A while ago, a gentleman mentioned the VAERS program, and that is to identify any side effects. Of course, that is there to help us to continue to monitor the situation, okay? The vaccines have much, much more benefits, of course, and we need to continue, okay? I did hear, you know, of any illnesses that were brought up earlier. You know, those illnesses have been here for many years, regardless of the vaccines, okay? And we do, once again, encourage everybody to follow up with their health provider on more specific guidance on how to get through this COVID pandemic, okay? Also, once again, we will have our next booster clinic on Saturday for anybody that chooses to get it, once again. At the moment, also, we are fortunate, once again, to have the ability to help out our staff and parents and students, the ones that choose to get our help, okay? RGCG ISD will continue to make decisions, you know, thinking of everybody in home, the public health, of all the students and the staff in the community altogether, okay? We want to thank everybody for their continued support, and we will continue to make what we believe is the best decisions based on evidence-based research and practices and accredited sources as well.
Rolando, just a quick question. Can you repeat? RGCG ISD does not mandate vaccines.
Correct.
Basically, people who choose to get the vaccines, get them, and people who don't, don't get them, correct?
Correct, correct. So at the moment, once again, RGCG ISD does not require you to get the COVID vaccine of any kind. We don't require you to get the Pfizer, the Moderna, the Johnson. That is an option that every person has that option to make, okay? And every parent, of course, has that option to make. We don't require the vaccines for employment purposes or for attendance purposes.
So basically, you don't need a vaccine to come to school, correct?
Not at all. Not at all, sir.
By the way, sir, I always say you're Superman, sir. You do a great job. You've done a great job in this pandemic, sir. And again, I want to congratulate you for keeping the district informed and keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Item five, report, update report on construction projects. Mr. Adolfo Peña.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, community members. Every month, we like to bring updates as to where we're at with the different construction projects throughout the district, and, you know, we're going to have a short video presentation, and then we'll make a few more comments.
Rio Grande City Gruya ISD has been hard at work in an effort to make our schools and our buildings safe and better for our students and staff. We want to ensure that our staff is healthy and comfortable so that our students have the best environment to learn and grow from. The Pavilion at General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary has been completely renovated for our students, and we are starting to see more and more progress at our softball and baseball fields, with the Gruya High School softball field being 95% complete and only a few minor cosmetic touches before it is 100% completed. We would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their schedules to ensure these projects continue and are completed on time. At RGCG ISD, we offer experiences of a lifetime.
This is one of our softball fields, already almost 97% complete. This one's a baseball. Beautiful. Mr. Ramirez, any comments on any deadlines or future on the softball and baseball fields? As he's walking up, you know, we'd like to thank our maintenance department and, you know, Mr. Ramirez, on some of these projects. Every month, we bring to you, you know, these last month's updates. We have several roofing projects that are coming to an end that we'll be showcasing as well. You know, all these, on behalf of our school district and other contractors that are working. So we want to thank you all, Mr. TJ Gonzalez, Alex Garza, and everyone working together to make sure that, you know, we work on the facilities that we have and bring them up to par and bring them up, and, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to be our students that are going to benefit. So thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and everyone else.
Thank you, sir. And again, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and just to give you a quick update, yes, Mr. Peña, I mentioned that those projects are coming along very well. We're very excited and hope to see them completed by the mid-December. That's what I've been told. And they, as a matter of fact, because of the rain delay, they have asked to turn the lights for them so they can work late this next couple of days. So they're on schedule to finish hopefully by second to the third week of December, so we're super excited. Gruya softball field, minor things, then they're pending the metal fence in the back and to pour the rubber pellets over it. That'll be the final touches. As you saw in the pictures, the Gruya baseball is 50% complete, and they've already started the ones here at Gruya, and, I mean, I'm sorry, the Rio baseball and softball. Along with that, they're also pending the backstop nets. Those are going to be coming in from Houston. Company Houston is going to come and install them. The poles have already been installed, and I guess I'll talk about the canopy here in the next item, but we're super excited about the project coming along very well, and we'll be bringing more updates on the projects that are still pending. So, thank you.
Just one quick question. They'll be ready before baseball and softball season, right?
Yes, sir. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you, sir.
Item number six, update report on STC dual enrollment. Mrs. Escobedo.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. Ms. Roxanne Garza and myself are here to report on the trends that we have seen in our dual enrollment program, our enrollments, and where it is that we're moving forward with this program. We are looking at restructuring. We're looking at different options to provide our students for post-secondary and make sure that they're college-ready. So there are certain options that we have currently. Out of the four options that are partnering, IHE does offer us, we already have currently three of the four. So we're looking at offering that fourth option, which is the academies. Back, if you used, back sometime, we used to have what we called DEMSA. I don't know for those of you that remember, we had some students that graduated under the DEMSA program. We're looking at bringing back those academies and see how it is that we can offer those opportunities for those students. So we're bringing you a report that's going to kind of give you the numbers and the cost that we've had invested in the dual enrollment program. So that's why we're here for you tonight. Ms. Garza is going to go ahead and take over.
Good evening. On the enrollment, you can see, you want to go to the next slide, please? On the enrollment, you can see when we have, we start from fall 2019, and in fall 2019, we had the averages before the pandemic. We had 276 students at Early College, 254 at Rio Grande City High School, and 62 students from Gruya High School enrolled in dual enrollment classes through STC. You see the next slide, the next column right there, you can see the spring 2020. Of course, that's when the pandemic happened, okay? Our students were enrolled, and you can see the little increase in the spring semester because during the spring semester, that's when we offer more dual classes. The students take one semester courses, that's when we allow the freshmen to take dual classes at STC. So you're going to see an increase during the spring semester of every academic year. And of course, you see the numbers lower again during the summer because, of course, it's summer break, okay? And some students do not take classes during the summer. And of course, you can see the numbers for the fall 2020 and spring 2021. That was when our students were doing complete virtual during the pandemic, so the students were not face-to-face with the professor. They were at home, working from home, and they were not able to go to the campus, okay? So you can see the little decrease, you can see the numbers there, but of course, you see the decrease. And in the fall 2021, where you see right now, we do have a little dip in the numbers, but of course, we're working on picking up our numbers for dual enrollment with STC. On the next slide, you're going to see, you all have the handout in front of you all, okay? On the next slide, we're going to go over the successful and unsuccessful students, okay? Successful, when we say successful, is a student who earns an A, B, or C at STC, and unsuccessful is when a student earns a D or an F, withdraws from a class, or gets an I and incomplete in the class, okay? And on the next slide, these are the numbers, okay? And you're going to look at the numbers, and these are not, if you look at the numbers, like for Rio Grande City High School in fall 2019, we didn't have 450 students enrolled in STC. Those are the number of grades that were earned from Rio Grande City High School. And you can see from the 450, 402 were successful, so those 402 earned an A, B, or a C, okay? And then you can see the successful percentage there is 89.3%, and you can see, of course, pre-pandemic, you have, we have an 89.3% at Rio Grande City High School in the fall 2019, 89.8% at Gruya High School, and 83.5% at Early College. If you look at the summer 2020, you're going to see where it goes down, okay? That's the beginning of the pandemic where the students were completely virtual, and you're going to see the success rate, 72.4%, 71.4%, and 71.1%. And you're going to see where, of course, the students were at home, they did not have. And this is what concerns us because, of course, the students that are not successful, that hurts their financial aid.
Well, that's, can I ask you a real quick question? And that's what kind of sticks out to me. If you look at the fall of 2020, the spring of 2021, and the summer of 20, you have, you know, 102 students, 111 students, 19, 30, but then down here in the very bottom, you have 143, which is 66.7%. And correct me if I'm wrong, if a student does not maintain a GPA of a 2.0, and then he graduates with a GPA of less than 2.0, and he wants to go to take classes, he doesn't qualify for financial aid, would I be, would I be right in saying that statement?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
So how do we handle that?
We're going to go over that.
Okay, very good.
We're going to handle the game.
Very good, man.
We're going to talk about that.
That, to be honest, that concerns me because, it concerns me because it's not only to STC. Let's say somebody wants to go to Pan America or UTSA or other colleges, and they don't have that grade, and to me, that's a 66%. If you look at the one in the bottom, that to me, it just throws up all kinds of red flags.
Correct, correct. That's what we're, that's our little red flag because of financial aid.
I'll be quiet.
Okay. No, no, no. And then you can see the grand total. You can see the grand total, and that's for two academic years. That's for two academic years. And of course, the average is 82.8% at Rio, 81.6% at Gruya, and 75.6% at Early College, okay? So then Mrs. Escobedo will go over the cost.
Okay, in this, the next slide, Mr. Vidal is referring to this. This is what we're doing, and this is where our partnering school is helping us out. This is a metrics trend, and we can see for the past four years where our kids fall. And those kids that are unsuccessful, they'll fall in certain categories. They'll fall as academic probation, suspension, and then, you know, you drop a class and you go into a grade. Then this is where, and this is the metrics that we partner with STC, and this shows us where it is and what it is that we need to do. So our partnering IHE does assist us, and they do come in and provide support. We do ensure that students take advantage of the services that STC does offer them, and that's what we're looking at revamping and revisiting and restructuring the dual enrollment program because we do not want to affect those students once they do go on to post-secondary, especially with their financial aid. So what this is showing us here is of the 572 students in 2020 that enrolled, 8.9% fell on the academic probation. But if you see down here, yellow, this is a warning when it comes to our partnering school. This is where they come in and they assist us in developing a target interventions for these students to make sure that they're successful in the classes that they enroll for the following semester.
So I've got another question. So let's say, for example, and I'm just talking out of turn, but if, let's say if you have a child or a child that's taking dual enrollment, and after the, I know there's a drop, we call a drop, a drop dead day where they can drop, and they don't get penalized. It's drop pass or drop fail, but there's a point when everybody, so do we keep a monitor and saying, "These kids are..." In other words, if a kid has a 45 average, and do we have something, a mechanism that says, "This kid needs to drop this class because it's going to affect them?"
Yes. STC is now currently providing us two reports throughout the semester. Actually, this morning, we've got our second report. They call it the Starfish Report. We currently got that report this morning, and our high school's gone on sending the emails to the students, "This is where your status is. This is where you're at," because we are approaching our drop date, like you did mention, which will be this Friday. So that's why we are informing our students, "This is where you're at at your course." So we need to make that informed decision if the student continues.
Sometimes it's better to drop the class and take.
Correct. Yes, it is, sir. Yes, it is. So this is, this is the metrics that our partnering school has helped us in making sure that we monitor. The good thing is, we have a lot of green, so we're in a good place. You know, there's some things that, some gaps that we do need to fill, but we are in a good place, you know, when it comes to our dual enrollment overall. Our next slide, this is what we have invested in our dual enrollment program. I am going to mention that this is only the academic dual enrollment because we do also have a CTE dual enrollment, and that, of course, comes from those funds. But this is the, this is the dual enrollment that comes from 199 funding. But this is what we have invested throughout the last two academic years, and you do see there where it says the tuition and then extra fees. Those extra fees are online fees for any student that takes a course online because we don't offer everything in person. We do have ISD staff members that do provide the dual enrollment instruction, and we do not get billed for them. So that's what we're trying to promote a lot more of our teachers going out to STC to be able to become those professors that we can use for dual enrollment and not have to be paying for a section.
So another question, I ask a lot of questions, but how hard is it for, let's say, a person who has a master's degree in math? Because I've been told that we have teachers that have master's degrees, and they go to STC, and they try and get a job to come and teach dual enrollment, and STC kind of rejects them, and it's a catch-22. And what do I mean a catch-22? If you approve them, I don't get the money, and if I don't approve them, I get the money. So what?
It's a business.
That's exactly the point. So how does that work?
We are working, and we have been meeting with STC, our partnering IHE, and there is processes that for those teachers that do want to apply, there is some training on how to go about and making, preparing themselves for that interview that they need to present a lesson to, for their dean of the school that they're applying for. But we do, we currently have a couple of interested individuals that will be going through the application process to be able to become a dual enrollment.
Can you just keep us aware how many people get, get, basically, approved by? Because if none of them are getting approved, then we need to talk to our rep and say they need to get it approved.
We'll do that, sir. And this is the total, this is for school year 1920, and we also have, we had a total of cost of 559 with 559, 695. That was the total for that academic year. And then you'll go on, and you can see the following academic year. And then, of course, we're pending, and we did see in the school year 2020, when we were remote, they did waive the online or that, those extra fees because everyone went online. It was nothing that we were requesting. The school did go online. So this is a report that we wanted to bring to you all. We are currently surveying students for that fourth option that I did mention earlier. So we do have some presentations from STC coming in for parents and students to see what the interest is, and once we do have that interest, then we'll bring that item back to you all for approval.
Last question. Is STC doing regular classes now, or is it still online?
Yes, no, we've gotten back face-to-face. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe that's all the items on the reports and information, so we'll proceed to section seven, recommending and approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. We have two items on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item one and two, and the consent agenda is presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Vidal. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required? There are being an all's in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number three, consider or take possible action on accepting resignation of member of Board of Trustees, Mrs. Daria, Dr. B. Babanow. Before I entertain any motion, we do have to inform the public that the reason this item is placed on today's agenda is that we received formal notice from Dr. B. to the district on November 1st, 2021, declaring her resignation effective immediately. However, the board still has to accept that resignation. So with that brief intro, do I have a motion to item number three?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the resignation of member of Board of Trustees of Ms. Daria, Dr. B. Babinow.
There's a motion.
Presented in our board packet as item number three.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
If I can just say one thing about Dr. B., and I'll just say, even though at times we were at odds, one thing is for sure, she always kept the, the, the kids at heart, and I will give her credit for that, and that her ki, her kids were always number one to her, and, and that's basically, if Dr. Babinow can be associated, something would be with children. So with that said, that's the only comment I'll say.
We can also give statements after the motion, after we take the vote, but let's go ahead and at least count, or accept, count the vote, but yeah. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. All is in favor by raising your left. With a vote of five to one, the motion passes. On that note, I'm not sure if anybody on the board wants to say a few words. I will say that she is a pillar of the community. She did put in five years of public service, and all those on this side of, I guess, the room, know what it is, time-wise investment, being attacked personally, your family, whatever the case may be. But the reason we're all up here is because we love one thing, it's public service, and we're passionate and very opinionated and prideful about what we believe in, believe in, but don't ever think that it's easy, because it isn't. So I applaud her for the five years that, that she gave to the district, and, and we wish her nothing but the best, and like Mr. Varela says, hopefully, she can be a part of the district in some safe form. I know that the district had got her a plaque. Do you want to read the plaque, Mr. Penney?
On behalf of Rio Grande City Gruia ISD, our entire school district, we'd like to thank Dr. B. for all the service that she's provided to our students, our staff. You know, it does not go unnoticed, Dr. B., so we would like to thank you for your service. And we do have this plaque that reads, "With our greatest appreciation, we hereby honor Dr. Daria, Dr. B. Babinet, for your five years of service to the students and staff of Rio Grande City Gruia ISD." So thank you very much, Dr. B.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add anything to, to the item? Item number three? Okay. All right. Item number four, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service to host the Miss State County Fair Pageant RGC GISD Fort Ringo Auditorium.
Mr. President, can I move to approve item four, item five, item six, item seven, item eight, item nine, and item 10, presented in our board packet with some discussion on one or two items?
Mr. Varela, will you, there's an issue I need to discuss on item nine, so can you limit that to item eight?
Okay. How was that again?
Just limit it to item eight. There's a couple of issues I need to discuss on item nine.
I believe there's a motion to approve items three through eight as presented in the board.
No, okay, I'm sorry. Four through. Okay, four through eight, let's call it that.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penney. Is any discussion on any particular item?
I, I have one question.
Sure.
It says, "Consider and take possible action on request for use of school buses from the Holy Family Church of La Grúa." Can we do that or not, or how does, what is this about? Could I ask?
Nothing, I, I mean.
Right. The, the school district does have, and I think is traditionally, can lease out property, any property of the school district, whether it's a stadium, or a gymnasium, or in this case, a bus. So the district does have that, does have that option to do it. It's been done in the past, and we did check, they did provide a, an insurance policy for that travel.
I, I don't mind helping out, I just want to make sure we're in the.
Yes, sir. I have one discussion on item four.
Go ahead, Mr. Penney.
There was a concern one time, I, is the auditorium suitable for the pageant? I remember there was an issue we had with some parts, some concrete from the roof falling on at one point. I don't think it fell on anybody, but is it, is it in the right condition? Does anybody know to, to host such a pageant?
Mr. Penney, to answer that question, we do have a report from an engineer who came in to, to give his, his, take his position on, on the safety of the roof, and what we were asked to do to mediate was to, or to intervene, is to close off the sides. Reason being is that there were small fragments of, I don't know, I'm not sure what the material is, but it was plaster type, to stay away from those sides. But I would be more than happy to forward that report to, with permission, Mr. Salazar, so he can forward it to a structural engineer where we need to get that reviewed. But we do have that, that, that report.
Hey, thank you. It's plaster. Yeah, I, I thought it was concrete or something that had fallen, but I guess for disclosure purposes, it's a good idea. All right.
Any further discussion?
Who accepts liability on those? Where, where does the liability fall if somebody's injured? Does it fall within the school?
If this, yes, it's school district property, for example, they're running up and down the bleachers, or they fall down, they would be, again, normally, as a school district, would not be responsible, because we have some immunity as a school district. The only time that we would be liable, for example, is if we were transporting some children in a school bus. So if I'm walking outside today, or anybody, and a shingle falls on top of my head, and I get hurt, we have, as a district, we have immunity. So if, if that cement were to fall, now I'm saying it would, but if it did, the district would be, we are immune from lawsuits.
It's plaster, sure, not cement.
It's plaster, it's women.
Yeah. Important.
So the answer is no, we would not be.
Any further discussion? All right. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, there's a second by Mr. Penney. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. On item number nine, it's consider and take possible action on consulting for property insurance, submission preparation, support, and discussing this item with Mr. Salazar, I believe we need to go out for proposals. So with, for that reason, I'm making a motion to table item nine. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second it, but just real quickly, do we have time to go to proposals or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So there's a motion to table by myself, second by Mr. Varela. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on ratifying agreement for civil engineering services for the New Gruia Middle School and for the addition and rehab of the multipurpose center.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 10 as presented in our board agenda with whatever the recommendation for that particular item is.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penney. Any discussion? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Five in favor, with one abstention by Mr. Velazquez, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on contracting an architect slash engineer for canopies at Gruia High School.
I move that we approve item 11 as presented in our board packet with some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Mr. Ramírez?
I regret to inform you that the canopies that were approved back in March of 2021 and completed in May of 2021 by RGV Sun Shades are coming apart. The baseball canopy has pretty much collapsed due to wind, due to poor workmanship. The canopy on the home side of the softball field is also in jeopardy of collapsing. We were out there last week and took some pictures during a walkthrough. There were some cracks also on the footing, on, on one of the cement footings. So with that being said, in talking to Mr. Penney, Superintendent, I recommend that we hire a structural engineer to give us direction as far as what we need to do, either to repair them or to remove them due to safety concerns.
As far as I know, that Mrs. Salazar has been, I guess, looking into legal remedies we may have against the original.
Yes, sir. I've had the multiple conversations and emails and texts with the gentleman that built those canopies, and at first, he was a little hesitant about coming over, even though he did warranty him for 15, 15 years. But in further, further communication with them, he brought us an invoice, not an invoice, but a proposal for $8,000 to be able to repair the, the damage there to that canopy. We declined. We stressed that those were under warranty and that he should have, I mean, it's poor workmanship on his part, you know? They're not, they're less than a year old. It's been about six months since they were completed back in May, but no word since then. So Mr. Baltasar did send them an email, requesting they come and fulfill that, that part of the contract to repair those damages. So at this time, we are waiting, but in the meantime, because baseball season's up upon us here in a couple of months, I do recommend that we hire somebody to give us direction as far as what to do next.
Baltar, can we, I guess, go out there and sue them for, or take legal action against them?
We've placed them on notice. We've placed them on notice and let them know that it was defective material, also misdefective design and workmanship. So they've already got that, and we, we're trying to get it, we gave them a very short notice so that we could get it done hopefully before December, but they have not responded at this point, so, but they've been placed on notice already. They were clearly, their invoices say 15-year warranty for materials, parts, and labor, and, and of course, it's, it hasn't even been one year, and they're already falling apart. So it's unfortunate, but in the meantime, we can't have them up there, because that does cause a danger for the students. And even if we wouldn't be liable, we still don't want to have a student hurt because those shades fall on top of them. So I believe there was an architect or engineers looking at it, and we've asked for something in writing that says it is defective workmanship.
And Mr. Ramírez, this recommendation on the structural engineer, it comes from Defino Garza Jr., correct?
Yes, sir. There was an engineer by the name of Cloromido in Osa that did a walkthrough last week, again, unofficial walkthrough, but again, give us kind of recommendation. But at this time, the, the recommendation is to hire somebody officially to give us something in writing to proceed.
All right.
So what happens if we actually repair them or replace them? And what about our warranty?
Well, we'd have to, again, we'd have to put the original contractor, for example, if we paid $20,000 for them, and we end up spending $10,000 fixing it, then we're going to send them the bill for $10,000, and, and again, place them on notice and have them place their carrier on notice, their insurance carrier, because they're required to have X amount of dollars for, for coverage before they do business with the school district. So, well, hopefully, they'll make a, like, an insurance claim with it.
Any further discussion on item 11? Okay, there being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on contracting architect slash engineer to evaluate Gruia High School guardrails.
I move that we approve item 12 as presented in our board packet with whatever recommendations.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion required on item 12?
There's a oral presentation.
Mr. Penney, you were going to address that.
Yes, sir. We're requesting to look at the, at this time, the Gruia second floor and third floor, the rails at a certain feet, and we're looking, you know, to see for an architect and an engineer to evaluate it. We're probably looking at probably extending them higher for the safety of our students.
Hmm, okay. And can you tell us why, Mr. Penney?
We've had several incidents in the past, sir, where some students, you know, are threatening to, to go ahead and jump over. So it's a serious situation, and we want to make sure that we address it, and, you know, we want to take a closer look and have an architect and a, a structural engineer to look at this.
So make it difficult for them to try and basically.
Yes, sir. To, to do. And then, once we go ahead and, and, you know, hopefully get this completed, then we'll look at Rio Grande City High School, because that one does have a second for us.
Any further discussion required on item 12? All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on resolution to cast the Rio Grande City Gruia ISD vote for representation on the Stark County appraisal districts board of directors for 2022 to 2023. Is there a motion or any discussion on item 13?
I move that we approve item 13, and putting the votes, and I guess, splitting the votes in half, half the votes going to Mr. Rogelio Olivares, and the other one to Encarnacion Sonito.
Signs.
Signs.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
And a second by Mr. Penney. Any discussion required on item 13? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on requisitions of $5,000 and over.
I move that we approve item 14 as presented with a little bit of discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Penney. Go ahead, proceed with discussion.
I just, I noticed that we're, we're buying 224 desktop computers.
Okay. What requisition is that?
It's a 339676. It's on page 170 on the bottom. It says 224?
It's for the special ed department.
Yes, it's for the special ed department for all their resource classes. They pretty much want district-wide, they have it separated by different campuses to get different amounts.
They, they have the funds for these computers?
Yes, and they're 224.
Okay. And I also have a question on, no? Yes, next question, I, I want to make sure that, I know we have, we've been hiring a lot of local contractors to do work in, in roofing and things of that nature, and I just want to make sure that the, the amount, that we have to stay under 50,000. Anything above 50,000 in the aggregate, you have to go to bids.
Correct.
So if it ever goes to $49,995, it has to go, just make sure that we don't pass the aggregate.
Correct. And then the one that, in particular here, we had checked it, and right now, we are under.
As long as we stay under the aggregate.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion required on item 14? All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
Abstain.
Okay. With five in favor, with one abstention by Mr. Velazquez, motion passes. Item 15, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. We have number 22-17, number 22-23, 22-24, and 22-25. Is there a motion or any discussion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 15 as presented with the 22-17, 22-23, 22-24, and 22-25, as long as they are to the lowest bidders or catalog bids.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Pope. Is there any discussion required on 15? Item 15? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 16, take it, Mr. Penney. Item 16, consider and take possible action on request for permission to enter into an agreement between Rio Grande City Gruia ISD and City of La Grúa for a grant-funded school resource officer.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 16 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required on item 16?
What is this, could I ask?
Dr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. On item 16, we're respectfully asking the board to continue a memorandum of understanding
understanding that we had with the City of La Núgrua, with the schools, the campuses, I should say, that are in the jurisdiction of the city. We do have Chief of Police Olivares, and at the time, it was, uh, I don't know his rank, but he's now the teacher at River Grande City High School Officer Ben Court. And, uh, we, since he was hired by the district to take our classes for the children of River Grande City High School, we're asking to continue this memorandum of understanding with the City of La Núgrua to service Núgrua High School, Núgrua Middle School, Alto Bonito Elementary, and Núgrua Elementary. And, uh, with, with, it's a grant-funded, uh, program. These officers, or Corporal Parón, who's in attendance also here, I don't know, gentlemen, you want to come up so the board can? We have Chief of Police and Corporal Parón here from the City of La Núgrua. Uh, they have short-term and long-term goals for our children. I know, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mr. Peña, as, as the principal of Núgrua High School also saw the benefits of the program. And, uh, they, they look at truancy and again, they, they recognize the needs of the children of these campuses in the jurisdiction of City of La Núgrua. Um, there's one thing in speaking to our general counsel, we're recommending that we do draft a formal, as you see in your packet, there's only a letter of intent. We're asking that we come back with a formal MOU and have that ratified by the board once we drop the specifics. I don't know if you have any questions for me or for Chief of Police, Corporal?
I have something for Chief of Police. I know that, uh, the, uh, our school district is having a big conference on, on law enforcement. And I think, uh, I think there are a lot of schools coming from all over the state of Texas. And, uh, basically, anything, any help you could give us there as far as?
December eleventh?
Ah?
December eleventh?
Yeah.
I'll be there.
Okay. Any, anything you can help us with, we want to make a good showing on, on, because I think they're coming from all over the state of Texas and it would be nice for?
I'll be there.
Okay.
Mr. Bean?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add, Mr. President, that in the past, when I was a Núgrua High School principal there, yes, Mr. Ben Court, Officer Ben Court would come and work directly with our counselors and they would work with students. And through the counselors, they would identify students that would benefit through the program. So they are an asset to our district.
Thank you very much for everything you do, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you both. Thank you. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on renewal of agreement between Valley Solvents and Chemicals and Rural Grande City Núgrua ISD for chemical waste services.
Mr. President, I move that we approve seven, item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. I will add, however, um, in discussion with board counsel, that item nineteen needs to be subject to changing the venue clause, um, on paragraph six. They, they did not, they failed to change that part of the contract, so, um, as long as they do that, I think we're okay.
Okay. So let me amend, uh, item, uh, the motion approved seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty with the, uh, the item, the fact that in item nineteen, we have to change, what was that again?
It's the venue clause in paragraph six.
Yeah, paragraph, it's already been, uh, yes, it's been corrected. I think they had only corrected seven and they need to correct six.
Correct.
Remove the state of, of New York to put the state of Texas.
Right. So we saw state of New York and that scared us a little.
Yes, I, I took care of that with Mr. Peña and, uh, Mr. Salazar this afternoon.
Because I just want to make sure that it's updated, because about the?
Yes.
Backup still session.
No, yes, uh, they corrected it, because it's a DocuSign, so they corrected and they sent me the new one, so Mr. Peña will just go on, online and?
I just want to be sure, because we're, we want to go to New York.
Jury trial in the Bronx. Yeah, we, we struggled that very quickly.
So, so, okay.
Let, let me make the motion. I approve that, uh, we approve item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty with the corrections that need to be done on item nineteen.
Very well. There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there, was, there was a second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on any of those items?
I'll second the motion as amended.
As amended. All right. There being none, uh, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. That takes us to item twenty, uh, twenty-one. Consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding MOU between Region One Education Service Center, Education Opportunity Center, Grant Operation College Bound and Beyond, and Rural Grande City Núgrua ISD for 2021 through 2026 school years.
I move that we approve item twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll s-
Second by Mr. Castillo. Is any discussion required on any of those items? Those items twenty-one through twenty-five.
Give you some time, because I know there's quite a few. They're all memorandums of understanding of programs we have in our school, I believe.
Yeah.
And D-MAC.
All right. There being none, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action on request for permission for one superintendent, three administrators, seven principals, one math strategist, and one math teacher to attend the 2022 TASSA Midwinter Conference in Austin, Texas on January twenty-ninth, 2022, through February second, 2022. And no, Jay Peña, you cannot go.
I move that we approve item twenty-six as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion? Well, I would say that, uh, Mr. Peña, you're also going to present at this conference, actually, correct?
That is correct, sir. And, uh, if you let, Ms. Ellis will tell us the reason behind.
Please, by all means.
Good evening, President of the Board, Board members. Mr. Peña, uh, we're very excited to be, to have been selected to present at the TASSA Midwinter Conference. And, uh, Mr. Peña, myself, and Mrs. Moore's will be presenting, and we're going to be addressing equity in secondary mathematics. We've partnered up with Agile Mind, the UT Dana Center, and we've, uh, done wonderful work as far as implementing the mathematics across from sixth grade all the way to high school and incorporating the social-emotional learning component together with that with all our students. So we're very proud and we're really excited to go and showcase RGC G-I-S-D at the TASSA Midwinter.
All right. Is there any further discussion required on item twenty-six?
So we can't go?
No.
You can go. You can go on your own.
All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase 300 laptops for student use.
I move, I make a motion to approve item twenty-seven as presented in our board packet with a little discussion.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Uh, go ahead and proceed with discussion.
Just real quickly, I know that we bought computers for every single student. Out of curiosity, uh, how many of those seniors that graduated, did we get most of those computers back, first of all?
A lot of them did come back, but they're not in good condition, uh, to be given, issued out to other students. So we did purchase some, um, Chromebooks in the past. And in speaking to Ms. Benitez, she wasn't be, she wasn't able to be here tonight, um, she did express concern earlier that General Ricardo Santos Elementary kindergarten students are without devices. And, um, plus additional ones, additional students that still do not have, because more than anticipated were still in, they're not in working condition.
So I know we have an IT department. Is it more expensive to fix them than to buy them new?
The parts are a little, on the expensive side, struts are taking three, four, five weeks to get here.
So let me ask you a question. Uh, as an average cost of repair, what is the average cost of a repair of a computer, more or less?
If we replace a screen, we're looking at about $110. Uh, we replace a battery, we're looking at about $70. If we replace a PC, or that, that's inexpensive, that, that's what we, we're starting, we're looking at about $25.
But as an average cost, I'm, I'm saying, you get computers that have broken screens, that have batteries, as an average cost, what is the average cost to fix a computer?
I, I would say around $70. When you do accommodations, a battery, a string?
And how much are the computers new?
These in particular, um, the, between $250 to $300.
I think these were made to compete with those Chromebooks, right? I think the Chromebook was one of those that was made a little cheaper.
Yes, correct. Chromebooks, because, um, our students are, they're using it and their homework or assignments are virtual, well, not virtual, they're online through Google Classroom. Actually, what they need is Google.
So do we still teach computer maintenance in our schools? Like fixing computers and?
At rural high school, there's a, um, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a maintenance computer there.
So why don't we just give them?
We, uh, I, I would have?
So why don't we give them the computers to fix?
Uh, I think the problem is, and maybe, Mr. Sines, I don't know if you'll agree with me on this, I think these computers that they're designing now are like intended one-use type computers. What they're doing is they're soldering all the parts together, so they're good for like maybe one person, they use it for a while, they're never intended for resale, which is why they hit that price point, like two, $300 price point.
They're soldering the memory, they're soldering the hard drive, the certain things that's consolidated into the motherboard.
So it's raw.
Once the motherboard gets damaged, they, that's it.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with the motherboard getting, get rid of it, but if it's a screen, shouldn't be a big deal. If it's a battery, it shouldn't be a big deal. But, but, but I understand, if the motherboard gets damaged, we'll throw it in a trash can, but maybe, maybe we can look at it, look, look at that. But anyway, I don't have a problem with, with buying these computers, but, uh, uh, it would be nice to get all the computers and go through them and find out how many we need to dump and how many we can maybe save.
Yeah. I think?
Also with both computer maintenance, if we do work with that?
Yeah. I think we have to assume a high proportion of them aren't coming back. We have to assume that.
All right. Okay. There was a motion by Mr. Varela, with second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Texas Department of State Health Services and Rural Grande City Núgrua ISD for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion? To approve items twenty-eight through thirty-three.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required on any of those items?
I just, uh, the only thing I want to, I get, talk to Mr. Peña about, I know they're having that criminal justice conference. And that's going to be a statewide thing. It would be nice for our police department, our PD from our local, from our schools and maybe talk to other agencies and see who can participate to try and put a good spin. I hear they're coming from all over the state of Texas to that particular conference.
That would've been item twenty-nine. I know they've always sold them in other places, so it's, it's kind of nice that they're having it here.
Yes, sir.
And then for item thirty, I think that's, uh, the first annual review for, revive Fort Ringled Christmas Bazaar.
I think they, they want two weekends to fund, fundraise, is that what?
I think they want to fundraise, they want to have a bazaar to kind of fundraise further forward to put up signs and things of that nature. Two weekends? It's not a big deal. I don't think.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion?
Last thing I would say, that defibrillator in item thirty-two?
Yes.
I know that for a fact that the defibrillator in La Núgrua, Texas, many, many years ago, saved a gentleman. If we had had that defibrillator back then at that Núgrua, uh, middle, uh, gym, that person would be dead right now. So basically, that already has paid much, many, many dividends, but go ahead.
It's my understanding, you just got to replace or renew them for, to be in compliance.
Yes, we're going to renew all of them. We want updated models. Yes, sir.
Okay. But I know that in La Núgrua, there's a gentleman that died. In La Núgrua, and, and he's a referee, he actually died. They put that machine and they brought him back?
Yes, sir. So we have had a history of using them, so we, we need?
He actually died?
Thank you, yes.
Uh-huh. We'll talk about that gentleman later. But he actually died.